I'd like to call to order the Town of McCandless meeting for March 9th, 2020. Council just broke from an executive session about personnel matters. Can we have the invocation and leading of the Pledge of Allegiance from Councilmember Clunin?
To our heavenly Creator, today we give our thanks for the opportunity to serve our community. We thank you for the town personnel who administer to the needs of our neighbors. We thank you for the men and women who work selflessly to keep us safe. We thank you for the teachers and coaches who share their knowledge and talents with our children. And we thank you for the citizens who challenge us all to be better. We ask that you guide us this evening as we respectfully share ideas, ask questions, and work to benefit all who live, work, and learn among us. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Number one, we have updated our small business bulletin board. It is now on the homepage of the town. And we've also made some flyers, here it is, some flyers to encourage with the directions on how to get our small locally owned businesses on our website. We talk about shopping local, but you don't realize how many businesses are here in McCandless that are local. So we're working on promoting them. So if you know of anyone, please direct them to our website. And I'm encouraging council members, whoever else wants to take these and pass them out, to please do so. Next, the town, I wanted to let everyone know the town was recognized at a luncheon this weekend for being selected as a banner community. And representing us there was Bill Kirk, Angela, and Trish were there. So thank you all for going representing us at the luncheon. And also, we have a field trip coming up to check all our MS4 projects. Do we have a date on that yet?
March 20th.
Okay.
At 2:00.
All right, council members, March 20th at 2:00 PM. Who are interested in going on that will meet here, wear some boots. Next, we will open the public hearing on the request of Don Pol of Pol Construction to change the zoning district of certain property located at 8500 Thompson Run Road, also identified as block and lot number 717J216 from C7, which is Office Building District, to R3, which is Townhouse and Garden Apartment District, and amend the town's zoning map accordingly. Who's going to do the presentation?
My name is Donald Tran through Tran Corporation on behalf of Pol Construction. The property we're talking about is 8500 Thompson Run Road. The property we're discussing, is this on?
Is the mic on?
It's on. It should be on. We tested it earlier.
It's on.
Okay. The property we're discussing this evening is 8500 Thompson Run Road. It's the site of the old YMCA building. It's a vacant lot. It's been vacant there for approximately like 12 years. It's a blighted property right now that's non-taxable. It's 3.76 acres. We are requesting, as stated, rezoning it from the C7 general office to R3, the multifamily garden type apartments and townhouses. To the north of the property is the Mascary Auto Center, which is Zone C3 Highway Commercial. To the east is the R3, the Foxcroft Plan, which is a condominium project, the zoned R3. To the south is the institutional zoning, which is the Temple Ohav Shalom. And then to the west is Thompson Run Road. And then further, further on the other side of Thompson Run is the Bedford County Memorial Park, which is also in the I zoning district. What we're proposing are 23 townhouse units. Based on the zoning, the R3 zoning, you're permitted 10 units per acre, which would allow 38 units. We're only proposing 23 units. We'll have all private streets. We'll have sidewalks on one side. Our maximum building height, which is permitted at 35 feet, we're proposing that only at 35 feet. We've met all the lot coverage requirements, and that's essentially what we're requesting this evening.
If I could, Madam President, just remind council that what you're considering today is only a change to the zoning map. So this isn't, you know, you're not considering the actual substance of the land development plan. You're not determining whether or not there is in fact proper lot coverage, or whether the stormwater regulations have been met, or whether the proper traffic circulation has been met. What you're doing right, what you're considering tonight is whether to change this particular parcel from the C7 zoning district, which it's currently zoned, to an R3 zoning. And, and once it's changed to R3, any of the uses that are permitted under R3 will be permitted. So there's no guarantee that this project would in fact move forward.
Are there any questions from council?
Just clarification on the adjacent zoning parcels. What are they zoned specifically? I know what the uses are currently, but what's the zoning there?
To the east there, that's the Foxcroft, Foxcroft Plan, that's R3 also.
Okay.
To the north, where the Mascary Auto is, that is C3. Then to the south, where the temple is, that's I, institutional. Then across where the cemetery is, that's also institutional.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments or questions by council?
I guess I have one other question for maybe for our zoning officer. This appears to be a down zoning request, so that the, the developed land will be a less intense use than if it were potentially developed as a C7. Is that?
Yeah, so just, just a couple notes on the C7 uses potentially, you know, that could be used there would be daycare center, various types of offices. Also, a couple other permitted uses that, you know, would be heavy equipment or other off-site parking, research lab, interesting one there, and conditional storage facility, whereas in R3, it's just going to be either townhomes or, or garden apartments. So, you know, depending on the time of day and, and traffic, you know, that might be generated from a C7 use, it could be a less intense usage at R3.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Anything else before? Any other comments or questions? Okay. Comments from citizens? Please come up to the microphone.
My name is Dan DeMoyes.
If you don't mind coming up, sir, to the microphone, so the recording can get your name, and then you can insert your comment.
My name's Dan DeMoyes. I'm hard of hearing, so I might have said that I wanted to get some information on buffer zone at the edge of the property. I live in, over the fence from the proposed site. And whether or not plans are final yet are still to be agreed upon.
I think tonight we're just discussing changing the zoning, but they would have to come back with a plan, and that's where we would do all the buffers and the setbacks and all the stormwater and all that stuff.
Is that right?
That's right.
So, so none of that has been decided. We don't even have a plan yet.
Okay. Thank you very much.
There is a required buffer zone.
Right.
That they will be, they will have to comply with.
Okay.
Okay?
And we can get that at the office during regular business hours?
It's available in terms of giving you an idea of what that buffer might look like.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
Any other citizen comments? Please come up.
Hi, my name is Arnie Begler. I'm the president of Temple Ohav Shalom, the adjacent property. And this was probably a little bit premature based upon the zoning, but I wanted to just present a couple thoughts upfront as this project moves forward. We're a vibrant 150 household Reform Jewish synagogue. We're located, as I said, adjacent to the YWCA property. I just want to say that most of our spiritual activities happen on Friday and Saturday with educational activities on Sunday, and then again on Tuesday nights. We also operate a preschool there that's in session from 8:00 until 4:00. So it's a pretty active, an active community. We, needless to say, I guess one of my points is since the tragedy at the Tree of Life Synagogue on October 27th of 2019, security is our primary concern at the temple. And to that end, we are in the process of applying for several state grants and federal grants where we're looking at fencing in our back playground. This has nothing to do with what, this is long before this was happening, but we're trying to make some decisions as to security and those properties. So as we move forward, we're just concerned with the security. For instance, our fence today is six feet high with the new addition over there that we're not opposing any addition, do we need to go to 10 feet? So we're just, there's a lot of security things that we have in mind. I think you've answered the question about what type of housing is being planned. It sounds like some great housing, so we look forward to that. I think that the gentleman before me about the privacy, the buffer zone between the two properties with a preschool and a playground and different things like that, I think you also addressed before, you guys are good, you answered all the questions before I got here, about the, you know, the, a traffic study perhaps. I know at Duncan and Thompson, I can tell you right now, when our preschool lets out, there's a lot of congestion trying to get through that intersection. So during the construction period, and then again after we, they put in the 23 units or said number of units, that additional traffic, I think, is something that needs to be taken into consideration. And the last thing is, it sounds like we're way premature, but then during the demolition and the stormwater and all those different issues, I'm sure you'll address at the proper time. So thank you for letting me just state those comments. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Please come back for the plan of site approval. Any other questions or comments? Please come up.
My name's Teresa Booley. I live in Carriage Hill Road. I'm in the Graybrook Plan, and we're not on that map, but just looking at that design right there, I'd hate to live in that townhouse, no offense, and have an accident on Thompson Run. How am I getting out of there? I don't see an access road going anywhere. And at least in any plan I've ever been in or any apartment complex that I've visited, there's two ways to get in or out. Even Bennington Woods, which cropped up in the early 90s, there's two ways to get into Bennington Woods. I've lived in Graybrook now for 15 years, and I'm here to tell you, I don't know if it's because of McCandless crossings, or Belisario's changed their location, but the traffic on Thompson Run Road has really picked up. And when I've had to go up to the temple to pick up farm share, getting out of there at any time of day is not easy, making a left, making a right. And unlike a business which would be eight to five, you have people coming in and out of a townhouse community all the time. And I think the Thompson Run just cannot handle more traffic. You come up Duncan Avenue to make a right on Thompson Run, there's someone making a left into Mascary's, you've got to hit your brakes. So this is just now going to be another turn, and I don't see where you're going to put an access road for safety. If you need to get a fire truck up there and Thompson Run is blocked for some reason, it's not going to happen. So that's, that's just from what I'm seeing. So thank you.
Thank you. Was another comment here? Please come up.
My name is Dennis Mascary. I own Mascary Auto Center, Thompson Run Road. My concerns are likewise. Traffic is a problem here because it's backed me on my driveway every night. And it is somewhat of a hazard for my clients to get in and out. And if it would intensify, it could be worse. But the big thing is, is the fire truck want access? When I put my addition on, the township insisted I use the majority of the property that I bought for a fire truck to gain 360 degrees around my facility. And I lost the best part of the money, or the property that I purchased from the Y years back to do this big addition, which I had to shrink tremendously because of the flood control, fencing. I put all the fencing up that borders Foxcroft. I wasn't allowed to put any lights, pole lights up on the property in the back because it would interfere with Foxcroft. So there's a lot of things that have to go into consideration as I had to comply with. I had to do the 40-year flood. I had to do the flood in the back of the property as well as the front of the property. And controlling that was more expensive than the building. The building was far less money than what I had to do to comply with the township's request. Now, not that it means anything, but I tried to buy that property. It was suggested to me by Bruce Betty and the town manager Toby at the time, that I had to go after that myself and the sin lot, try to buy that property over the years. I've been trying to buy that for like three or four years, and had the deal pretty much settled when a nonchalant individual come in and outbid me and took the property, which is business. But I had plans of just making a parking lot out of it. Okay? Eliminating the driveway that's there now and use it just for parking. But it didn't happen. So, I mean, progress is progress. What he does with the property is totally up to him. All I'm concerned about is he has to do everything that I did in order to keep the township happy, or I wasn't allowed to get a building permit. It took nine months for me to get a building permit on that property. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
He will have to comply with all of those same ordinances, sir.
Okay.
Any other comments? Okay, come up.
Hi, my name's Jessie Wentzle, and I live at 8700 Thompson Run Road at Mascary Auto Body above. I live in a suite above it. And I'm concerned for security purposes. We already have a lot of kids walking through that property from Graybrook all hours of the night to go to the Exxon and to go to Belisario's. And I'm concerned about people walking through like our property and the safety for our customers' vehicles on our lot. We have about 100 cars like at a time on our lot, and our safety is the main concern. And I really am worried about if there's going to be 28 townhouses, all the people that could be walking through our property, and I think that fencing would need to be done or something. Also, with that, there's so much traffic, like everyone else said, at the stop sign. If you have all those townhouses, I mean, that's 28 more cars going through. I just don't see how it's going to be safe. But that's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Any other comments? All right. Hearing none, the public hearing is closed. So I blew right past the minutes, I apologize. Is there a motion to approve the following minutes submitted to each council member from council's meeting February 10th, 2020, and council's meeting February 24th, 2020? So moved.
Second.
All right, there's been a motion, a second. Are there any comments or amendments or any changes that need to be made? Hearing none, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The minutes are approved. Reports of committees, Finance and Personnel Committee?
Call to order the Finance and Personnel Committee meeting. Item number one, review the checklist number three dated February 1, 2020 through February 29, 2020, totaling $1,174,439.32, as submitted to each member of council and posted on the bulletin board and town website.
Is there a second? I'll just review them today.
Item number two.
No questions? No questions?
Comments are at the end. Review the monthly financial summary and dashboard report.
Good evening, council. You have before you hopefully the final December financial report for 2019. Next month, we will start on 2020, once the audit is complete. We've had some limited updates from last month for the full fiscal year. We're at 106% of revenue budget and 100, I'm sorry, and 95% of the expenditure budget. I do anticipate some adjustments during the independent audit that's coming up this week. We have excesses in revenue on the earned income tax side as well as the realty transfer tax. And all of your expenditures are expected to end the year under budget. Does anyone have any questions?
Yes, ma'am. I was curious about the business privilege tax.
Yes.
That it didn't seem like it's meeting the projected budget, and it seems like we have more and more business in our town. Why is that number only growing by 3%?
So as part of 2020, we anticipate some additional, I want to say code enforcement on that, and to do some research on not only fire marshal reviews, but also who we have building permits with, business license reviews, et cetera. So our business licensed professional has sent out delinquent notices as well as made phone calls, et cetera, in doing that. So we anticipate an additional uptick in that revenue in 2020 as a result of our efforts.
Mr. Chairman, a question for Trish. As we get further into the impact of this coronavirus, at what point should the town be going in and taking a look and potentially restating revenue projections?
That would be something that once we get through business privilege tax, if that's still a factor in emergency management, we would, we would start to look at that. So if we would have any need to, as part of the emergency management response, make adjustments, or if businesses start to close, et cetera, in anticipation of efforts, that is when we would take steps to make adjustments to the revenue budget. And then, if necessary, any cuts to expenditures.
Okay, item number three, move to adopt resolution number four of the 2020 series, a resolution awarding the allocation of 25% of the 2019 regional asset proceeds that exceeded the amount received in 2018 to among the eligible entities, which are the Northland Library, the Ambulance Authority, the Council of Governments, which is a total of $2,730.68 in accordance with Act 77 of 1993 and Intergovernmental Cooperative Laws of Pennsylvania. We have a second?
I guess I'm not, I'm not clear as to how, is there a proposed division of, is it a third, a third, a third? Is that what the motion is presented as?
We hadn't decided that, to my knowledge. We just identified these three as potential candidates.
Right, so we'll need, you know, we'll need an amended motion choosing one, two, or all three, and in what, in what percentages, so that council can consider that.
I have a question. Do we give consideration as McCandless providing our monies to, for example, the ambulance authority? Do we expect the same from the other municipalities that are sharing that authority?
I will say, to my knowledge, Franklin Park is the other municipality in particular case that they give their excess grant funding to the library. So I would not expect that to change.
However, Franklin Park also provides a stipend, like I hate to use that word, but provides funding to the ambulance authority on a per capita type basis. Is that correct?
Yes, it's, it's significant. And they've been doing that for a couple of years now.
So we need a motion from someone on how we want to, what we want to do with this $2,730?
Correct.
So, Madam President, I would, I would move to amend the motion to provide to the ambulance authority this year, the $2,730.68.
And I'll second that. Are there any other motion? Are there any other nominations for this?
I think you have a motion and a second, so now's the discussion on that particular motion, and if it doesn't pass, then it would.
We were nominating all of our things at once now.
I think it works a little bit differently than the nominations for, you know, officers.
This is a nomination for money. Okay, all right, all right.
Right, I mean, you could, you could make a-
You're a parliamentary-
Now, you could make a motion to amend that motion to-
Okay.
-reallocate.
Okay.
Where anyone can make a motion to amend that motion.
Okay. He's chairing this part of the meeting?
So the motion is to send it to the ambulance authority? We have a second to that motion?
Yes, I can answer.
Okay, all in favor?
First, a discussion amongst council.
Okay, sorry. Discussion among council.
And then we give that public an opportunity.
Mr. Chairman, I would just, I would just add that the reason I offered the amendment was because last year we did provide this funding to the library authority that also been a beneficiary of some other funding that has not been available to our ambulance authority. And so I believe it's just reasonable to offer this up to them this year. Thank you.
Yes.
Are there any questions from the audience?
Public comments?
No, hearing none.
Hearing none? Okay, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Against?
Nay.
Okay, passes.
We need to do a roll call vote?
Word two.
Yes.
Word three?
Yes.
Word four, is that, word five?
Yes.
Word six?
Yes.
Word seven?
Yes.
Word one?
No.
Motion passes.
Okay, item number four, move to appoint the town manager's recommended appointment of an IT consultant effective March 16th, 2020.
And that recommendation is to engage PM Computing. We have a number of members from our technology committee who I think did a stellar job in preparing the requests for proposals and reviewing those. Oftentimes, having discussions went well over my head.
Andrew Grimm, point of order, I'd like to second that motion. Thank you.
I would just, maybe just to help, could we, I don't think we identified the consultant in the initial motion.
Oh, okay.
I just, I made the recommendation that it's PM Computing.
Right, because the motion was just to-
But I didn't make a motion, I can't make a motion.
Mr. Mazur made a motion, but didn't identify the consultant in his motion just to, just to, just to appoint an IT consultant. So we just asked Mr. Mazur to, to restate his motion to appoint fill in the blank as the IT consultant. Mr. Mazur made that motion.
Okay. We make the motion to hire the IT consultant. His name is?
PM Computing.
PM Computing, PM Computing as a IT consultant effective March 16th, 2020.
I second the motion.
Any comment from council?
And I would suggest that with the technology committee being here, they can outline some of their thinking in regard to that decision, they've been involved. Marcy Pearson, who is the chairperson of the committee.
Hi, and the rest of my team is, our team is back there as well, so if you have any questions. You know, we started this back in September when we first were formed as a committee, met with many of Bob's staff, with folks from the police department to understand not only what worked, but what didn't work and what needed to be done. So we spent a couple of months researching what you had, what products you have, and the rest of that, and then pulled together with the help of the team, this detailed request for proposals for the details, leveraging a lot of our expertise as to what we've seen in our individual businesses and roles, and then put that out to bid. And ended up with eight, eight responses, very good responses. This was not an easy decision, but we looked at not only what they could do, you know, the technology that they could provide, their approach to how they would, would work with the town, not only just on an individual basis like today, you know, fixing things or upgrading, but helping provide strategic direction to Bob and his team as we go through what are some of the new technologies that are coming down. We've got multiple versions of some software pieces that need to be combined. So it was, it was not just technology, a technologist to come in and work with things. It's also helping to set a strategic direction for the town. to set a strategic direction for the town. And so we finally came down, we met with several of the vendors as they responded, answered questions, and, you know, finally came down with a decision that Bob and his team thought, and we did as well, was a good fit, not only from, as I said, the technology, their approach, but also their background and understanding of this unique requirements that a town such as ours would have. Questions?
How about a shout out? I'd like, Marcy, could you recognize the rest of the team? Because you guys did an amazing job for the town.
So yes, we've got Craig, and we have the two Joes here. If you guys just assist us, we do, I mean, it has been, you know, we've got security expertise, we've got professors from Duquesne, we've got Joe, who owns his own business. So we really do have a good perspective, I think, of the industry. And it's been a great team effort. We're looking forward to project number two. Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Okay, item number five.
We need to vote.
Okay, need to vote?
Mm-hmm.
Call the vote?
You call the vote.
Okay.
All in favor?
All right, call the vote for approval of the town manager's recommended appointment of an IT consultant effective March 16, 2020. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Against? Not a rule. Motion passed. Okay, next item, move to accept the resignation of Andre Lesa, a member of the Technology Advisory Committee, effective immediately.
Second the motion.
Any comment?
Mr. Chairman, I would like to just state unequivocally this had nothing to do with the recommendation for the IT consulting. Andre is a very busy man, a very smart guy, and he will be very tough shoes to fill for the technology committee.
Okay, we have a move in second, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, opposed?
Motion carried.
Motion carried. Okay, last item, any further public comment on any of the items just discussed? Okay, then we close the finance committee meeting.
Anyone interested in applying for that position will be posted tomorrow. You have 30 days to apply, and there will be interviews, and we'll slide you right in there, so. Zoning committee?
Sorry?
That's okay.
The zoning committee did meet in March. The minutes have not been prepared yet, they will be submitted as soon as...
That would be the zoning hearing board.
Okay.
And the zoning committee had no business that came forward this time. Public safety committee?
Public safety, first up, chief's report.
As you can probably see in the report, the month of February for the Town and McCandless Police Department was a busy one as far as training goes. We had officers train to be Glock armorers. We had one of our SRT members attend advanced negotiator training that benefits him in his role as an SRT member as well as a Town and McCandless sergeant. We got one of our officers trained up as a field training officer. He was certified as a field trainer. When we eventually hire, he will be utilized as the field training officer, one of them. We also had two of our officers attend investigating child abuse cases, which is unfortunately one of our duties. Also, with the coronavirus being at the forefront of everybody's mind these days, we went ahead and ordered some equipment for the officers this month, masks, eye protection, gloves, things that the medics should have on any of these assist calls, but in case they don't, we need to arm our officers with them. So we made sure that we have that available to each of our officers. Other than that, you all have my report. Are there any questions?
I liked the fact that you're doing some bi-monthly meetings with the surrounding communities and joining forces with them, as well as the FBI. I think that's a great idea.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. Information sharing, I know from my days as an investigator, is always vital. It solves cases for us whenever we're working with other agencies.
I think you even say your best resource is communication.
Absolutely is.
That was good in your report. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Any questions, comments from council?
Thanks.
Public comments? None? Okay, closes the public safety committee.
Okay, services committee. Item one, the fire marshals' report for the month of December 2019 and January of 2020, and permit report for February 20...
Public Works.
Public Works, I'm sorry.
It happens.
I was just gonna wait until you were done, and then I'm back.
I'm just so anxious, Dan, I'm sorry.
So the first item is the Public Works activity report.
I'll make it short. Okay, good evening, you have my report for February. Pretty self-explanatory. If anybody has any questions, please feel free to give me a shout, and I'll try to answer them for you.
Any questions from council?
Getting a jump start on everything in the summer, aren't you?
We are indeed. One comment that I would make, we are, I had a conversation with representatives from American Salt Company today, joining the request of many other municipalities to eliminate the minimum requirement purchases for this past winter. We are not alone in the fact that nobody has used a whole lot of salt this winter, and it looks like we're not going to use a whole lot more. So I was told by the representatives that they are considering it, and they hope to make a final decision in the next couple of weeks. I also have a call into Ambrose Rocco with North Hills Cog with the same question to be presented to Morton Salt, who is the supplier for the cog. So I'm hoping to get some positive answers, because at this point, we still must buy 2,200 tons of salt. And needless to say, the building is nearly full, and there's not a whole lot of room to store it anywhere else. So we're looking for empty basements, if you know any that are...
I'll just add to that, that we're more than likely going to adjust our 2020, 2021 allocation to reflect the fact that we're going to have a surplus of salt going into the next season.
Is there any questions or comment from the public? That concludes our report, then.
Take two, services committee. Item one, fire marshals' report for the month of December 2019 and January 2020, and the permit report for February 2020.
Sir, thank you, and good evening, ladies and gentlemen. As stated, I have two reports to give as I was, I missed the last meeting due to the passing of my father. But just, in the December report, just to show the years in comparison, you can see just how busy we were. We ran over 1,000 calls, 1,097 calls in 2019. As opposed to the last three years, you can see 866 last year. So, you know, we've obviously, we had a huge jump in a lot of these, a lot of our responses. So there's the comparison with that. Any questions on the December report?
Fire Marshal Stack, one question, that jump in responses, is that largely due to the commercial development that we've been experiencing?
You know, I can't really say, sir. I mean, it has a little bit to do with it, but I really don't think it's, a lot of it, I think a lot of just technology. I mean, we're reporting to a lot more, you know, alarms, different types of alarms, just the general, the busyness of the town, you know, more traffic on the streets, more alarms they answer, more people in general, so, you know, things have to change here, because with the times, we're not getting any younger.
Will the quick response service that Peoples Fire Company is now offering, will that be figured into these totals?
They do show, yes, sir.
So that's part of it, too, then?
You are correct, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
I believe I did note that in the December one as well.
You did.
Yeah, 887 fire, 210 QRS.
Perfect. Are there any other questions from council?
And then as far as January is concerned, you should have that one as well, but it started off, again, with 113 calls, 66 of those fire. And so we're quite busy, again, for the three fire companies.
Any further questions? Hearing none. Item two, then, is the code enforcement violations complaint statistics report for the month of January 2020.
Yeah, I really don't have anything other than if you guys have any questions with that.
I'll just make one comment on it. There's an excellent report. I like the format, it's becoming easier to disseminate. I noticed a distinct drop in violations. It shows that the pro act of enforcement that's occurring is discouraging that bad behavior. And that's a good thing, and that's the whole purpose.
Right, a lot of it has to do with education.
Yes, absolutely.
Really does, absolutely, right.
Yep. Are there any comments from council?
I'd like to just point out one item. Mr. Shaneman, who is code enforcement officer, also received his residential building inspection certification during the month of February, so he's moving forward with some of the plans that we had in terms of becoming certified in some other areas to be able to assist Fire Marshal Stack and the building inspector, Mr. Frazier, moving forward.
With that, are there any comments from the public of Fire Marshal Stack's report? Hearing none, then that will conclude the services committee. Thank you.
If I may? Go ahead, please.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay. I was asked, and I wanted to kind of give an update on everybody, just as was briefly brought up for Chief Hawke, but the McCandless Emergency Management, as well as McCandless Franklin Park EMS, and the McCandless Police are closely monitoring the COVID-19 situation, and we certainly will advise the public of any recommendations and further action that's needed. In front of you, you should have a memo that was prepared by myself and others with some of the recommended strategies, should we have to, you know, take any action. As of today, March 9, just the concept of operations plan was adopted from the Allegheny County Emergency Management, Emergency Services, as well as the Allegheny County Health Department, as well as, they also have a K through 12 template, which is the pandemic plan for all schools, K through 12. So that was reviewed as well as adopted today. This CONOPS plan, as they call it, the Concept of Operations Plan, was written to ensure the quality of response provided in these cases involving the COVID-19 meets the standards of Allegheny County Health Department, as well as the CDC. The intent of this, this purpose of the plan was to describe the procedures followed by various agencies of the county and municipal government in response to the public health emergencies. This plan will specifically address the county actions to move from its normal day-to-day operations, will ramp up to a full-scale response to this pandemic event, should it occur, as well as, and it will return to normal business. So there's three stages of these plans, as is all. This will be activated based on the decisions of the chief of the Allegheny County Emergency Services, as well as Allegheny County Health and their reps. The response will be based on the organization of assignment of responsibilities specified by the Allegheny County Emergency Operations Plan. This will be directed by Allegheny County Health, as well as the CDC recommendations. This will then follow the Allegheny County Department of Emergency Services, Division of Emergency Management. They will be the lead coordinating agency from the county assets, also through to us at the local municipality level. So with the memo, as of today, it's known as there are six reported cases in Pennsylvania. All of them are in the Philadelphia area, as they were reported to be very mild as far as the symptoms are concerned. As Chief Hawke had mentioned, the police are equipping all their officers, as well as the McCandless Franklin Park Ambulance Authority, they are taking all universal precautions, using any type of, any patient showing any signs of symptoms will be masked, as well as the emergency crew will be isolated, and then it'll be directed by the medical command, whether or not to transport, and where the designated facility will be accepting these cases. Okay? So in the memo, again, just a number of different recommendations that are out there, you know, well, obviously, one of them would be if we have to just avoid close contact with people, considering elimination, some of these, you know, public meetings, eliminate as much contact as we can from outside people coming in, you know, and other interactions that we should, so, anything that's in here, obviously, just can be considered as such.
Are we going to do an official addition to our emergency management plan?
Absolutely, ma'am.
A contagion section?
Yes, infectious disease, yes.
Okay, right. So you're just working on that, we'll get to see...
Right, so tomorrow, Chief Hawke and myself will be attending a emergency meeting at the Allegheny County Emergency Operations Center with members of the Allegheny County Health Department, and so with some other further guidelines, you know, as tomorrow.
We'll look forward to hearing about that.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you very much.
Shirley.
Recreation? Sure, or Recreation Committee, the joint summer recreation program has been established, will begin Monday, June 15 through Friday, July 10, from 8:45 till noon. It will occur on two of our elementary schools, both Hosack and Bradford Woods, so children have their opportunity to choose which site to go to. It's a great price, at $1.75 for four weeks. I'm not sure, as a mom, if I've heard of a price that good for taking care of my kids. So we encourage all members of North Allegheny School District to participate, and you don't even need to be a resident, you can also participate as a non-resident. More information's available online, or you can also register online at franklamparkborough.us. That's all.
Okay. Is there any unfinished business, council business? I have a couple of new business things to bring up. It was a great suggestion, I thought, from council member Kirk, as well as council member Clunin, that they suggested that perhaps we should consider recording our planning committing meetings. And so I talked with the, Bob thought it was a good idea, I talked with our planning commission, and they thought it was a good idea, too. So I wanted to see if anyone had any comments about that, or I know it will definitely help council be able to hear all the questions and all the things that the planning commission has worked through, so that when those things come to council, we already have a lot of good information ahead of time. And it will be the same thing beyond the YouTube channel. Concerns, questions?
I'd just comment, I want to thank you and council for pressing forward with that. I guess the reason that I had promoted the idea was that it's clear that the planning commission is different from our other committees in that they make decisions that actually directly impact our residents sometimes, and so having that transparency with that process, I thought was just so important. So thank you all for that.
It was a great idea. Any other comments from anyone?
I have a comment. I agree this will make it a lot easier for someone like me to be able to see what happens in those meetings, and I appreciate that. I'm just a little concerned, I understand, Mr. Kirk, there's a difference between that committee and the other ones, I just want to make sure that we're not encouraging spectatorship. I'd rather have people come to the meetings and engage. I just think going forward, you need to be careful about where that line is.
So everybody's good with continuing on with this, then? Make sure everybody's good? Okay, great. The other thing is, we need, we received a resignation today, so we wanted to go ahead and move forward with it and bring it out today, it was email, so that's why you don't know about this, but, or maybe you do. Motion to accept the resignation of Shannon Yegel from the Activities Committee, effective immediately. A lot of times, people get on committees and don't realize it, how time-consuming they can be, and how busy their lives are, and sometimes they can't make meetings, so that was the case here. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Is there any questions about that? No, okay. All right, then, that's effective immediately. Oh, all those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, resignation accepted. So we can post that tomorrow, too, then. We skipped over seminars. We should put those on the floor. We skipped over seminars, we should put those on the slide here by now. Seminars, one specific that I wanted to just make the town aware of that is going on, and then members of the town and council who will be attending, is that March 30th is our, we don't know that we have a name for it, but our harassment compliance training is going to be that day, and staff is going to be attending, there's, will be four meetings that day, 11:30 to, and, and 1:30, and town council, and department heads can either choose from 2:30 or 5:30 on the 30th. So please, just so they know how many people to expect, so please RSVP to that, and that will also, that will be offered to all the committees, and as well as our police department, everybody. Refresh it for everybody. Is there any other new business? Anyone else has? Okay, all right. Hearing now, this is time for public comment. It does not have to be, it can be on anything, it doesn't have to be on agenda items. Going once, twice. All right, hearing no comment, is there a motion to adjourn?
Absolutely.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion is second, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Meeting is adjourned.